Work, intentional work. Historically, we've come back on a Monday, and then we noticed when we looked at the attendance the next day that almost everyone who went on the DC trip was absent to school the following day. So they were missing an additional day of school to sleep and to do all of their work. So we thought that that problem might be solved. We went for weekends so that they could come back on this they could come back on a Saturday and Sunday to sleep and to do their work so they feel confident to be back to school prepared. So that was the thought process.
It's great. This is a much richer trip, agree. Such a wonderful diversity of places to visit. And for the return on investment of eight hours there and eight hours back, you really want to make that time worthwhile. So I really like how you took advantage of the full week. And yeah, I think no one's going to be jealous anyone on this trip already.
Well, he's still eligible to go.
That is true.
If he wants to work, then.
That is true.
Yeah, my only question was going to be, how do you handle the assignments that they're missing here while they're out during those days? If there's either time, homework time on the trip, or if you find, like you were saying, that they really do have to catch up when they get back and how other teachers have approached that.
So it's a variation. The students who are a little bit more organized and, you know, have their genetics in control, they do a lot of the work on the bus because there's a lot of time coming down and back. That's what I do most of my work. And then going from place to place, they also have a significant amount of time in the bus. Then in the evenings, when we get back to the motel after dinner, a lot of them would get together and work. I actually had several of my A.T. students who were on the trip last year who would come and slide papers under my door at like 11:00. They were just written though that evening. So I had to break them for the bus. But most of them did a pretty good job of keeping up with all the work. They do have to get all of the work in. They have, it's a requirement of the trip. And since a lot of students go, the teachers know to have that work prepared. But there are always those students who struggle with getting the work done in time to dinner or managing all of their pieces. And I think that's students who are more prone to missing the whole day or the morning after. Because they're trying to try and get something done or study for something that they know they have to take when they get back. So I would like to have more oversight in the future on the trip. Like I was thinking of implementing a kind of nightly check-in. It'd be nice if we knew if instead of just the students having the assignments, we had an idea of what each class was missing. That way we can redirect them as necessary. So that might be a possible.
What's the fundraising plan?
So last time when we did fundraising, we had some dine-ins, just sort of little small fundraisers. But really, the most successful fundraiser we had was Selling Mums. A lot of the students made a pretty sizable amount of money. I think we one student took $500 off its cost in Selling Mums. So I was thinking if we went along the same lines, I did that fundraiser and maybe like a spring one, like a Mother's Day sale or a point set of sale around the holidays. Those things were pretty popular, and they also turned a pretty good profit. I also have already drafted a letter to local businesses to try to get sponsorship essentially, donations toward the trip. And, you know, if the trip went forward, I would probably also write something to the trustees and see if they've helped in the past. So hoping that they would be just as generous this time.
Do they stay at the same hotel the entire time? Do they switch?
Yes, so the hotel that they traditionally stayed at is about 15 minutes outside the city, within a minute drive. Very remote. And we have night security, so they have a person who stays there all night.
Do you need to vote on this?
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? Yeah, we will need a motion.
Motion to approve the DC trip.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good.
Glad you're looking for chaperones because you might have them. Okay. Let's see, next field trip presentation, High School Europe. Ms. Robbins.
Hello. I, you're on behalf of the students. So I know that you guys have already looked at a proposal for this trip. The big thing is there's been very little interest from the Class 2020. And Class 2022 has expressed a lot of interest. So we would like to just open it up to all of those current freshmen. Because if they want to take advantage of the trip, we think that would be a good opportunity for them. So that's the big focus of that trip. Any questions about that?
This is the trip in April 2020?
Yep, 2020. Yep, to Ireland, Wales.
Yep.
Any questions about the trip in general?
I think you're right about the trip. There was some, I'm just looking for it. It says here that the sophomores have been involved before.
Yes, they have. I know one just went on the current trip or last year's trip and the year before that or the trip before that. Sorry, I forget, it's not every year. There were a few sophomores who went. And this group feels confident that we're usually mature enough. And most of the kids who have expressed interest that I had last year were really mature and seemed to be interested in that. They were kind of self-sufficient. And the student group wouldn't have to worry about if they really think that that class is a good class. So there shouldn't be issues with the younger age. I think most of them are prepared to go. Obviously, we have chaperones and we have the tour guide with us, so we're not kind of letting them loose, which is probably the biggest concern.
Any questions? This seems like a smaller, more contained group as it is.
Yeah.
You have sophomores, juniors, and seniors. I'm glad you can expand it to try to get every slot filled that you need filled too.
Absolutely. And it seems like some of the friendship groups, it would also be great for that. Some of the kids who express interest from the current Class 2021, have friends in Class 2022. So I think it would be a great opportunity. It's always more fun to go with buddies and friends. So I think it would be beneficial for all of them.
Is this every other year?
It depends. Sometimes it's every year, I think it's supposed to be every other year, depending on the student interest.
So motion to amend the approval to include sophomores.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and you're next.
I don't get to sit and stand again.
Might not get back. So the New York trip, I know this is probably the third year in a row we've run it, for the eighth grade to New York City, to the Natural History Museum, the Medieval Times, Ellis Island, Statue of Liberty, and of course, the 9/11 Memorial and Museum. It's a two-day trip. We'd be going May 9th and 10th. So Thursday, Friday, which is fantastic because like Diane was saying, we had that weekend to recuperate. In the past, when we used to do this as a Boston trip, and it was on Wednesday and Thursday, we know the students weren't coming in. So the timing's perfect. It's in between MCAS dates, we already checked it out. So we'll actually be gone when seventh grader testing, which is kind of convenient for them, a little quiet. And we also think that I'll give a nice break in between some of the MCAS testing. You know, it'll be nice out, the weather should be perfect. Shouldn't affect too many children with schedules for sports. But of course, if that happens, we make arrangements with coaches and things like that. Do you guys have any questions about the itinerary? I know I didn't send the itinerary. If you guys want to copy it back, I can send you a copy. Exactly, I have a breakdown of the time and everything like that. It's the same itinerary we've run in the past, so.
That's one of my questions to ask, is it the same?
Yeah, same. It was running really smoothly. The first year, we had a few canes to figure out. Last year, it's been really, really well. You know, it was very hot out. So I think everything's really down pat. So a perfect itinerary, it's not too much, but also not too much downtime. So we get back from the Medieval Times, we're usually tired and in bed. It's not too early to get up. A little bit earlier than usual, but it seems to really work. And the itinerary, I think the kids are really interested because it's a lot of fun stuff, but educational. But again, not too much for two days, pretty great because it can be a lot for that age.
No musicals?
No, I will say, as much as that would be phenomenal, that adds a lot of cost of the trip, which is really unfortunate. We have looked at that in the past. I think that alone added at least $100. So just for the two-day trip, we're trying to keep the costs low.
If you took them to Hamilton, they would add $1,000.
Absolutely. I'll pay us to Hamilton, I can't even get tickets for the tour.
We do have some fundraisers in mind. We have the popcorn fundraiser that we always do, the number setup, which goes directly to the student. And then we'll probably do two, like overall fundraisers that go to the total cost of the trip, which will be a dine-in and then most likely a car wash in April, if it's nicer out. That one's a really low cost, you know, kind of easy fundraiser to do. So that's the plan. We're always looking for more fundraisers. If the eighth graders and the class officers want to do more, we're all in for that sort of. So we have three planned for right now, possibly more, depending on the location.
Questions about the cost or itinerary?
I just said I'm really enjoying it.
Yes. I think no one wants one too.
I don't, I think that is a good trip. Because that's where we're going to switch over between Boston and New York. Yes, because I didn't get to do it right. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I just want to clarify, the pricing is really based on the rooming situation?
So we generally price it out initially for the high cost. So we would do, we wouldn't do $4.90, we'd do $3.89. But that is without fundraising and without the trustees' money, which they're usually really generous, thankfully. With their donation, it should not offer $54 per person. And that's if every student goes, which often unfortunately isn't the case. There's always a few. So it should bring the cost down to about $3.30 for fundraising, is what we're looking at, hopefully.
It sounds like you guys have worked out the itinerary and timing and any challenges you've maybe encountered in prior years with traffic and transportation and stuff like that.
And the shuttle groups and chaperones and stuff like that. So it's definitely running very smoothly.
Great.
We already have a parent interested in being a chaperone nurse, which is great.
Oh, excellent.
That's so good.
All right. Any other questions?
Motion to approve the eighth grade New York City trip. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Let's see, now we have the health presentation, it's done.
So for those of you that have been to my presentation before and know that I like to share your live data and your data, so the presentation itself is not so dry. And it gives you an opportunity to take a look at some of the statistics, some of the themes, issues, the health issues that we're dealing with in health services and compare them in launches if you have them. And then I would like to take this time for a little bit of what we've had as presentation and just highlight a few things that I think are interesting or fun and have a little time for discussion. So I think I'll start with some of the highlights. I think all of you are probably parents of students in school, so you know about the birthday celebration plan that came under wellness community. If you're not, if you don't completely understand it, the concept is that we are discouraging any outside food from coming in for our birthday parties and discouraging individual birthday celebrations and instead having once a month, which for this month, I think it will be this Friday, that we, in existence, say the names of all the students who are celebrating a birthday and then everyone in the school will have treats in cafeteria that day. And Diane has even arranged that some of the treats will be gluten-free and dairy-free, so that there's she's hoping to deal with all the dietary restrictions among students, so everyone will have something. That is nutritional, but still kind of treats. And in doing this, we think that we know that there's going to be more classroom time for the parent and less pressure on the parents. We've heard a lot from parents, you know, how much care pressure there is to have a better party that somebody else had, at least have someone else had. And we know that that's very tempting and can be expensive. It gives us a chance to treat all the students equally. And it's also terrific in terms of meeting the regulations that are mandated for nutritional programs in terms of getting served in the school. And we also think, besides being more nutritious for the students, it also is a good example to how you can make nutritional choices. It's still suffering. So I will say that this can was six years in. So it may have just seemed like a letter that came in mail, but it has been a lengthy discussion and a lot of research. And we're really grateful to find the details and information. And we hope that's all received. I thought I would tell you about one program that we turned to schools. This report is actually for the 2007 to '08 student that was through the last year. And at the elementary school, we had one student who had required one online care since coming to school in kindergarten. The student suffered from a very severe form of a chronic condition that made the student very fragile and medically unstable. The family had submitted letters from their physician that said that the student wasn't accompanied by an adult at all time who was focusing on the student that could be life threatening. So since the student had been at the school, we had had a full alca or sometimes two pairs living the full-time job. As that student aged, we recognized not only their increased ability, but also how important it would be socially and developmentally to have them be independent before they came home to have kids. I think it would be, we recognize it would be a tremendous burden on the student to have to have someone with them at all time when they're becoming teenagers and very socially conscious. So Kirsten, who's our nurse over at the elementary school, started working, collaborating very closely with the parents, the healthcare providers, the teachers, the principal. And we developed a plan that went over a two-year period of time to have this student become increasingly independent. And it was extremely time-consuming process in order to collaborate well and to have the changes happening that were happening in school and near and at home so the student would feel comfortable and understand the expectations for her. And by the end of last year, we were able to no longer have a parent and staff with the student. And this year, the student is Hopkins. And when the student's condition is stable, the student is only going to the nurse's house again. So for us, this is a huge success.
Excellent.
One of the things that happened at Hopkins last year is we certainly, our leaders, I'm sure you are, have a baby. So the nurse, Anne, and one of the counseling staff went outside the district and got trained and learned a lot more about baby. And then came back and redesigned some baby presentations for all faculty, the faculty meeting, and made sure that the baby issue was getting included in the curriculum. And Michael Lano was one of the people that also was helping to help us with some education on baby. In terms of a mental health plan, this is a year that I've been on the county before where they had mental health for several years. This year will be the last year. But last year, when I came before the committee, we talked to you about the protocols that we had developed for suicide prevention, which is one aspect of the mental health. And that the protocols had been accepted and everyone in the district had been training suicide prevention and post-education. At that time, the committee was very adamant that you wanted to see me do more outreach into the community for educating families. So with your encouragement, that's when I started a column that appeared in the Ann's Weekly newsletter about resilience, resilience being an important attribute for suicide prevention. We didn't, I didn't call it suicide. I think that when we talk about suicide, people are very sensitive and hesitant to talk about it. But resilience is something that everyone's comfortable with and that sounds strong and positive. And I will say that I had a lot of positive feedback this year that I would have had with the column last year. So last year, I just kept writing, I wasn't sure what was happening. And now I wonder if there's people who actually get it. So I feel very pleased about that and very positive. So with this being the, so now I thought I would talk a little bit about some of the ideas I have for this year. In continuing the mental health plan, this will be the year when we incorporate suicide prevention curriculum into the classroom. And we're going to start with the eighth graders. Unfortunately, we lost our teacher who was trained to do that. So I'm developing an educational curriculum for Karen South, who is going to be taking out curriculum this year. And we have all the materials ready for the students. As soon as she feels comfortable, we can fit it into her curriculum. And as a parallel to that, immediately following the presentation of the curriculum, there is a suicide screening to assess each one of the students from risk and to make sure that we do an immediate action or a follow-up for individual students. I'm also concerned, as most people are, about opioid crisis. And one of the ones that I had was, I'm sure that I want to call it opioid, but continuing to do a column in addition to taking out these emails, and making on poisoning prevention. Because opioids, that is a form of poisoning anytime there's an overdose. And I think that in doing poisoning, I can also address some of the other issues that we're facing across the country and medication being accessible to young people, medication that's been a rock, incredible side for older people. It opens up a whole wide area of health education that I thought I'd teach this year. It also, poisoning is a, I don't have the numbers available at the moment, but it's a very high percentage of young people that comes from poisoning. I was also thinking about the possibility of using the website. I've been waiting for that for a long time. Been hearing about it for years, and now we have it. So I think that's going to be a good place where we can put some educational information, some of the information of our resiliency that we've developed over the years, some of our information about gender equity and LGBTQ issues. And just to use it as a great place to put information for free access and for the students. We're thinking about doing some education of the teachers at the elementary school on when it's appropriate to send students to the health office. The visits at the elementary school, the numbers of encounters continue to be pretty high, and that's a concern to us. And we are tracking as we do every single encounter. And we are seeing a lot of students who could have been out in the classroom like a loose tooth unless it's really bleeding heavily. We can teach the teachers how to take care of that. And so we want to make sure that we do get the students that need to come to us and that we don't disrupt the classroom by necessity. And then there was just one thing that I wanted to bring up to you this year. Took a look at the documents that I sent you. You may have noticed that I did a survey of.
It's six o'clock.
Sorry.
I got to say something to all of us.
That's true, I promise. So I did a survey of school nurse substitute compensation. We are having, we have in recent years had increasing difficulty recruiting and retaining substitutes, home nurses. And what we hear from our subs is that they can make more money working somewhere else nearby so that they're going to pass on our offer and work somewhere else. And on one hand, I do want to say that we are very aware of the budget constraints in the district. We realize some of the implications of the financial shortages. That concerns us also. But I know that if I'm unable to keep subs and we have to bring something in and I do it from an agency, that our reach out is $52, $54 dollars now. So I want to make sure that you understand what I'm facing. I only have a couple of subs. They all have very limited amount of time. And every sub that we have is working for ourselves. So if you have an opportunity to take a look, I'm not expecting any answers immediately, but I think it's something I'd like you folks to take a look at. And related to that is substitute nurses for field trips. So this is very timely, the field coordinator should be here. If the school must determine that a nurse has to attend the trip in order to protect the health of a student or some of the students, then we have to align with the subject that trip. The way that our attorney has interpreted our contract for us. Fred has said that field trips are paid in the same amount for a 24-hour period as they are paid for a seven-hour day. So I'm having a hard time giving subs for $125 for a seven-hour day. And then we are asking them to go on a field trip and make that same amount of money, but to be on call for any type of trouble. And this has proved to not be very helpful.
So can you remind us which unit contract this is about? Because I remember these discussions from.
It's not.
I'm sorry, nurse upstairs?
Yeah, it's not.
Substitutes are not covered in the collective bargaining agreement. Not members. And employees are not listed.
Including field trips?
Including field trips, including, yeah. Does a substitute nurse is not covered? Just as substitute teachers are not covered?
Got it. So you were saying Fred's legal interpretation of the contract.
Well, when I told you we had that, we had consulted Fred. That was his, that was what I heard back. He said the subs were a gift, a safe amount for a 24-hour period. Your recollection?
That is absolutely correct. They're not paid more than, that's going to show up, everybody. They're not paid, they're not paid any more than the bargaining rate when they don't have bargaining rights under the contract. They're not covered in the agreement.
So what we've done, our field trip, she had worked very hard to recruit parents who are former subs. And we have been successful in field trips. We have been hiring nurses and people who have field trips. It is a concern for us because we are very supportive of the rich women. And we recognize that when there's happen. For some kids, that's going to be their only option to travel on the field. So we want to be able to start that on the same night. We can do a field trip if we know the necessary care is needed.
Can I just, two questions before you go? Can I ask two questions before you move on? So one, so I understand that a hundred and twenty-five dollars is the entire day's worth of twenty-four hours when you pay more. As far as housing and just the cost of the trip itself, where does that go?
So my understanding is that if a nurse is going to go on a field trip, in order for them to be covered and the school's like, there are no insurance, they need to be, have some, even if it's a parent going along. There needs to be some compensation for them. And that has been negotiated between the field trip coordinator and the nurse's office.
And so they would not incur any expenses for that trip? Because they essentially are an additional chaperone, just like the other chaperones aren't incurring expenses. They're not incurring expenses.
And how often are we doing that versus having parents who also happen to be nurses?
So if there's a parent who happens to be a nurse and they're willing to do that, many parents are grateful for that because that ultimately drives down the cost of field trip for everybody. So they're happy to. I would say just about every time, there's a licensed nurse, there's a parent who's available and they've stepped up from the elementary school. So it's, I can't tell you.
Sure. I'm just curious. And then the liability or legal concerns around having a parent that's a nurse?
So it's okay because one, they're licensed, and two, they essentially, as Renee just pointed out, Attorney Dupre has indicated that providing with, whether it's a per diem compensation or in-kind compensation by hotel, admission to the park, whatever it is, that they're, they're considered-
Coming treated the same way as-
As any teacher chaperone or any other adult chaperone on the trip.
And I insisted that they go through exactly the same processes in nursing. We want to hire, so they have to be interviewed, checked, reviewed, assessed. I verify they're licensed. We ensure that they have their orientation training. We ensure that they have CPNA, DLAS certification. So any questions about what I talked about or any of the material I sent you?
I just want to comment that your column has been pretty wonderful. I read it. I really appreciate the thoughtful way in which you write it and the resources that you share. So thank you for that. I look forward to continuing on this new topic. The only comment I would have is considering perhaps a little bit more of what you call it. When I, when I hear poisoning, I think of an accident. I think of a coma around, of a same kind infant. I think that many parents might not treat it seriously or look over it if it's not called, you know, maybe not something alarming, but perhaps even just substance abuse, which is a broader terminology that could include so many things. I really appreciate the fact that educators have been trained in vaping. Set to an important thing in our time. And I would want everyone to know that Heather Mother's Club is sponsoring Spiffy to come in and do their wonderful presentation on all the vaping issues for parents a month from today, October twenty-fourth. So you should know about that. But also, for those who don't come out to that, it would be useful to get just even a little tidbit under that broad substance abuse column. Something as simple as an image of a jewel. This looks like a USB stick where your child can be addicted after weeks or the weeks. Something that's, you know, grab their attention and then tell them why vaping is important. Because I think a lot of people, they don't realize that their kid is just as likely as every other kid to be exposed. So it's important to grab that.
I would like to echo the previous comment about the title of the new, the new section of the email. And then also, you mentioned trying to limit nurse business that had the elementary by making, by getting teachers trained in some, like some things like loose tooth and things like that. And I would just like to express concern over that, not really knowing exactly what that list would be. Also knowing different comfortability levels of different teachers. I know some would go for it and some would automatically send the kid to the principal and enter to the nurse's office anyway. And then in terms of, I know technically you're supposed to be, like, you're supposed to be a licensed nurse to administer medication. I know there's a lot of nurses who do some medication. And I know some teachers that have decided upon themselves to give the child, to give the medication, to give the child medication off times, or get the child to the nurse and give the medication on that. So I would just hazard you to consider, to take some other things into consideration when talking about treating the teacher.
Did you say that you know that teachers are giving students medication?
I know, I know of an occasion where a teacher administered medication and it was off time.
Off time meaning?
A half an hour early.
Oh, I was not aware of any teachers giving students medication unless we have trained them to do so on a field trip. To be comfortable with, I-
I'll speak with you after.
Okay, I'll get in touch with you.
Okay.
And our thinking in teaching and talking to the teachers about when it's appropriate to send students to the health office is also to make sure that the students do have to the health office when they need to. So I appreciate your comments. That's disturbing to me.
Well, one lines of what Keith was saying, I think you, you know, you kind of walk the fine line of kind of the common things that you might be able to tell the teacher to look for versus making them feel like they're trying to diagnose something. And that's, that's where I'm hearing you on the void. But you also don't want the student to feel like they shouldn't be going to the nurse. So I, you know, I'm sure it's going to be tough to try to come up with those criteria, but even just starting with some of the simple things, like you said, that, you know, a loose tooth versus something that might be more severe, that maybe that's a starting point.
Well, we recognize that some of the issues, if they're losing a tooth, want to come to tooth outlets because we're the ones that have the tooth necklace.
Oh, of course.
If we were willing to make tooth necklaces if they were in the classrooms, there's a possibility that they could take out their tooth, get their tooth necklace, and go right back to it.
I don't want to sound like I'm not funny, but I don't really want a tooth necklace in my office.
I know there have been days that, for my kids, the nurse's office has been a real, like, respite to some of the chaos that can happen in the class or in the child's mind. So sometimes, you know, sometimes it's not a medical emergency that needs to be, you know, a doctor or a nurse, but having that open door, I think is helpful.
I think that shows in some of the numbers too, when you look at the numbers of anxiety in years past versus now too, that children behavior with these days just need more support. It's more stressful in general. So, yeah, I agree.
It's challenging for us because one of the things that's challenging is that we have psychologists and the other at elementary school, but I don't believe that we have an adjustment council working at elementary school. So oftentimes, the students that are not actually having physical complaints, but wanting very quiet and comfortable, something to talk to, will want to be in the health office.
I just want to say two things too. So I agree with you guys about the word poison. At first, I was thinking, well, I guess it's all your background and what you've known and experienced. So knowing that poison is more than what you're writing and a person may not look at it from that higher perspective. But recognizing that, and I think opioid epidemic is huge, vaping is huge, but recognizing that it's gone even far beyond that to common household substances and toxicities that are within the home, that are not accidental and being used on purposes for challenges or whatnot. And trying to tap into that and kind of mix that into sometimes just as large of a concern for, you know, our children who don't really understand. And then I should probably know this, and I don't. I've looked at the, at the school website. Do you have a noticeable health tab or, you know, a nursing tab? Or is there something on there that clearly indicates a section for nursing or?
There is a section for hospital services.
And it's visible on the main page? I'm just wondering, like, is it-
I have to look. Tara, I feel like it is, but I can't see it in my head.
I can't either. I should, no, I was going to say I should.
I know there is a new website structure, but I did check when we first set that to make sure that it was there.
So we will take a look at the website tomorrow and see.
Yeah, foster.
Oh, look, look at that.
Is it?
Family and resources. There's a section for foster.
Under family and resources. Because I do think that you have that section in Annie's weekly email has been important because I think that's such a good way to get the information out because everybody does read her weekly emails. So it's really great to have it in there because you don't get missed. And so I just, I think it's great to have it there or having, you know, a blurb at the end saying, "For more information, go to the school's website." Look, here's something that guides them for more information. And then it's clear that they know where to find your website so that your tab doesn't go unnoticed with that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just one last comment, and I'll make it quick, I promise. I was at the CES Collective Leadership Potential Services Board meeting about six months ago where they did a whole presentation of Spiffy and Spiffy data. And there were members of the board who are all representing different school committees who were saying, "Is there a reason why our superintendent, our school, would not be presenting this on an annual basis at our school committee meetings?" And I thought to myself, "There should be no reason whatsoever." And thank goodness that we look at these issues directly and try to address them each year. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. And the reason that we're not looking at that Spiffy data is that it's a heavy two year. So Matthew, which is like reporting, was not even given to us.
It just wasn't a Spiffy year.
It wasn't a Spiffy year, but whenever it is, you do bring it to us. So thank you.
Thank you. But I really appreciate that opportunity for Z.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to topic E, superintendent update opening this school.
All right. Field trips, all right. Okay, so, great. And we have some teachers here. But I can thank, well, I draw your attention to the numbers that I'm really thrilled about. Last year, nine twenty-two, two thousand and seventeen, our total school choice in totals for Catholic Elementary and Hopkins Academy were seventy-nine. And as of nine twenty, last week, they were ninety-eight. By nineteen, and I think it's a combination of things, but I certainly appreciate all the work that UNA members, UNTA teachers, and our ESPs and others, that all of our faculty and staff have tried to brainstorm. They brought ideas before you, put that in the paper. They've looked at doing certain kinds of certifications and endorsements. Ms. Lannan is interested in looking a little bit at how we can flesh out that global studies certificate. So I want to thank, students don't attend a district, they attend a school. And the quality of the school is dependent upon the educators in it. So, thank you. And what else can I tell you? So more students are coming and our diversity, we have increased diversity, and that's great news also. So it, and it feels to me, although I should look at that data more closely from year to year, this is only this year's data, it does feel to me, diversity across the district. And I feel like there's a lot of diversity in Hopkins. It could be just feeling subjective, but it does feel like the students, the new students who have arrived at Hopkins come from all over the world, literally. And that's been wonderful. I've included for you tallies by grade. So we're off to a good start. I will have more school choice information for you after our October one count. And I can give you information on school choice out. But we won't have that until those numbers are certified. So a great start. And again, I thank the teachers and the staff for making that possible.
I'll just compliment everybody. I'm open house. I had a great time following my kids' schedule. So that was tough.
I did too.
I was pretty confused by the schedule.
The dorm rooms look great.
Oh, but the, yeah, they do. I haven't commented on that. My youngster came home and told me what a nice classroom environment he has. Special lighting and carboning and just it provides an atmosphere for creativity that the kids relate to.
It's really wonderful. And our senior, Sophie Barrar, did a wonderful job. Her remarks included them in the email last week. She wrote it for each of us. She's a great kid.
Great. Thank you. Okay, scheduling presentations.
So that is just a suggested annual schedule for you all. We can add things. This is typically, these are the kinds of things that we look at every single year. So for example, the Nurse Leader Health Office data happened this month, but you'll see school and district strategies next month, a district PD plan after I've met with interested members of the PD committee, my goals. And you'll get MCATs and accountability data next month. MCATs data will be off from Bargo at midnight at twelve oh one a.m. on Thursday morning. For all of you who want to race to the website and see it. And so I could not present it to you tonight.
There will be people who do.
I would have been one of those people. Fortunately, they get it too early. So I'll get it to you next month. But if there are any other, if there, if there's any other data that you'd like to see throughout the year and there's a logical time to look at it, just let me know. We do have twice, and I'll ask advisors of student clubs who are interested in bringing what they're working on in front of the school committee. I do have that in there as well. So you can hear from different student groups.
Great. I think you need to see a few more acronyms.
Oh, I do.
We get dimples.
We don't have dimples.
We don't do dimples.
Now we have Spiffy.
The place dimples are Spiffy.
All right, request for waiver, building use.
Yeah, so FDC robotics is not a, it's not a school club, but many of our students participate in it. Bob Cullen is the one who is kind of the advisor. So this is a private club. And I first, I forget what it stands for. Shoot.
First tech challenge.
First tech challenge. Thank you. And so they have massive meets that people from all across the state participate in. And Bob thought it would be great kind of press for Western Mass and for our school to have it here. So he's requesting, as you can see, they have a certificate of insurance. They have liability insurance, FDC. But he's requesting a waiver of the building use fees, which you have done in the past for nonprofit groups. And if you think that the group is something that could possibly benefit the schools, so you can certainly do that if you would like. He's presenting that to you as a request.
It's very important to support this group. They've done a lot of great things for the students. And we, when we find, we give them great visibility to it.
Definitely agree on the visibility. I've attended these meets over the weekends, all day long, at other schools. And our role, the kids' role, the team's role in hosting it would be a leadership vault for them, which they haven't yet experienced. But it also gives a chance to showcase our school, our kids, our facility, and the things that we have to offer.
I would agree with all of that, even having never been part of any of that. But I'm just curious, like, what, what are, what would be the normal fee? Like what?
Look, I believe that be included. I believe it is. So, I should know, I don't. So would they be, it's the cost of a custodian? So any, any costs? Yeah, they would be youth-related nonprofit civic groups. Yeah. So, so we don't normally, so custodial contracted rates. But what we're also saying, oh, this says this here. So they wouldn't necessarily pay anything. They're willing to pay, they're willing to pay any fees that are normally incurred. If we already have a custodian on, so for example, if they do it on Saturday or Friday night- if they do it on Saturday or Friday night, we have a custodian on, we won't charge them for things that we would normally be paying for. So if there were any charges associated with it, he's asking. And I do believe that they are nonprofit. If they weren't a nonprofit, then it would be the $25 an hour. When he met with me, that wasn't clear to me. So if they were, if they don't have the 501(c)(3), then it would be the $25 per hour. And if that's the case, then.
No, but first robotics is a nonprofit.
Very large.
National nonprofit. And this is affiliated with them and they are providing insurance. So I think they qualify.
As in, so you're really not waiving anything per se?
Sorry for the question I haven't answered. It's hard to find every question.
Yeah. It's okay.
I read it earlier.
I also don't know. I mean, when I've attended these meets elsewhere, because they're here all day, they often, other facilities will set up places to buy food or you can pre-order food. So it turns into something that actually can bring in some income to the facility in terms of, you know, you've got a captive audience there. Because the lunch is very structured. You want it hard. People don't usually necessarily leave.
It's a booster setup or something?
They've had boosters, they've had cafeterias open where they've had a limited menu. And they basically take orders ahead of time and ask each team to turn them in so that they know how much food to prepare and they know what they're going to bring in. Which brings in everybody together in their common area and the teams can visit with one another, which is also fun. Yeah, yeah.
Curiously, could that, or snacks, or something like that, be used as a fundraiser for any of y'all's trips?
A fundraiser, it could, I'm sure that Chris was saying he could bring her lunch account closer. I thought it was a fundraiser. He was trying to get the lunch to come out of a random short, but. So it could be. It could be. So it could be, it could be any of those things. Yeah. And if it were something that the cafeteria that actually wanted to do, then they would have to agree to it. But Mr. Cullen did say that. Mr. Cullen did say that.
And I've seen other places where they've had tables set up for their student groups saying, "We're raising money for a trip" or "for whatever event." And people coming in from out of town have donated. So again, you're bringing in a big audience simply able to help contribute to other.
But big, how many are we talking?
I just saw that, he said a couple hundred. But I don't know how many schools they were talking about, but, you know.
Yeah, I believe he said at least two hundred.
So do we need to approve that?
You do, because in case there are any charges that may be associated, just make me feel good if you said, "No, it's okay, waive the building use fee."
Motion to approve the waiver of the building use fee. Or I'd like to see your votes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. That'd be really exciting if they could pass one of those.
I think it's really cool.
Okay.
I'm sorry to pass this because I was in queue. Did you vote to approve your terms?
We did. We approved all of them, yes.
I know I took some out just to, in case. We have two minutes for next time.
Yep. Okay, person on report. I think that ends all the presentations and discussion items. Yes. All right. Thank you. You're welcome to stay if you want.
Just gonna do it while grabbing.
All right, person on report. There is a surprise note in the line.
We did have two new ESPs, educational support professionals we hired. We do have one vacancy right in Hopkins Academy.
Public comment? Public just left?
No, soccer team just came back.
All right, business manager report.
Okay. As far as the regular expense report, there's really not much to report. It's one of those items of, well, we've got three new schools. How much is there to talk about, I guess. But basically, everything is, is pretty much going according to plan. There are some accounts that are in the negative. One new factor in both expenses we've had and encumbrances. I'm thinking specifically of items like the out-of-district tuition accounts. But those are, it's a temporary negative because we have grant money that has not been approved, but, you know, of course, we're confident it will be. And school choice money that's going to be used to offset some of it. Nothing's been transferred to those accounts yet. So it's, it's negative because we've put everything to the local budget, but we have enough to cover them in other accounts. So basically, once we get rolling with a few more expenses, we'll just transfer those into the grant, into school choice. And then see if those negatives can break back up. Looking pretty good, really, as far as we go so far this year. No worries that I can see. The main thing I really wanted to talk about tonight was the return of the lunch account to positive status. You got it? Almost $120.
I don't want you to bitch on that.
And, you know, with some of these accounts, again, the revenues have not been posted for, for August. So we'll actually have, I think, these accounts all go up a little bit. With the exception of school choice, that one has been. So, and the other factor is that so far, at least as of August 31st, the balances from last year were not rolled over yet by the town account. So when those do, there might be some slight adjustments to this. I hope not as much as $120 because that would really just break my heart at this point. But nevertheless, you know, these are the revolving accounts. We don't have a grant report this month because some grants were just approved, some we are waiting approval on. There's been no expenses charged to any of them yet. So, and until they're all approved, and then at least here we'll be in balance.
And Chris, back at the budget sheets, the summary for tuition to non-public schools.
Yeah.
That what you mentioned?
Yes. Yeah, I still have a base.
Yeah, to which we apply, it's basic survey. We apply considerable amount of grant. One grant is almost entirely, we expense out of district tuition.
It's $130,000 from the 240. That is not apparent, I believe. $125 from school choice. And I think there's something else as well. I just don't have it off the top of my head. But that, like I said, pretty much wipes out what looks like a very.
It's a terrible number, maybe?
Yes. Thank you. There it is. It looks like a pretty scary amount, but actually, like I said, it will disappear. Oh, I'm sorry, capital plan as well. I did, I was just at the capital mini-meeting. I presented the two items along with detailed explanations on the cafeteria equipment. Basically filling them in on the freezer with the floor that's pretty much gone at this point in time. Other reasons why we're replacing the cooler as well at the same time, the hood repairs, and the serving line that they want to replace. And with the health and security upgrades, I did bump that up slightly. Just based on something that I found today that I thought should be upgraded as well. It was something while I was in one of the schools that was pointed out to me. So I mentioned it to them. I did not give any details, just because I felt at an open meeting, that's just not something we wanted to talk about. But, you know, that's basically where we left it. They were trying to figure out what we can do to get these on here. I also mentioned, we had a, an inspection by the building inspector at the elementary school. He had a number of items that we needed to address. Excuse me. One of them was the wood chips at the playground weren't of the required thickness, so we had to put more wood chips there in case the kids fall. One of the items was, were the cracks in the parking lot sidewalks. There's a lot of cracks that had grass growing through them. And he determined that those are a trip hazard. So we got one price so far. We're actually working on getting more. But to repair all of the cracks at the elementary school is $16,510 is what the price was. So I didn't, didn't know if they could fit that on the fall, if they wanted to defer it until spring. They were leaning towards deferring it until spring. We also did a price for the Hopkins parking lot. That was $11,416, I believe. But the Hopkins parking lot is due to be resurfaced two, three years from now. And I just, that was not written up as any kind of violation. I told them at this point in time, I think we're better off just not spending the $11,000 and just wait until we resurface the whole parking lot.
Did it come up, the talk about revising the parking lot up here, across from the church and the building here?
It did not, no.
In terms of the parking lot or the driveway or? There, there was talk about adding more parking spaces there.
Oh, okay.
It was in the paper, we could sort of go. I thought if that got approved and they were going to tap it into our egress road up to Middle Street, that we could do one big.
Oh, I see. You know, the thing is, because I had this meeting, I asked to be put early on the agenda. And when I was done with my, I left to come here. So it's entirely possible they're discussing it after this week. I just don't know. Now, a couple of items, and you'll have to forgive me if I, if you've already said this, but items like the girls' locker room that are on the schedule for next year, should we be going out and getting some kind of more meaningful pricing than what we have on here? I mean, is that something that you have determined really needs to be done at that point in time?
Well, you have the previous, we had the previous plans from 2009 that folks here were that, right?
Yeah.
Eric and Jeff, I mean, were you, but they also, we know that the price is going to change. And it seems like we'd like to have a more realistic figure, but in terms of priorities, I think we did agree that we put in that year three bucket.
My sense is yes, it needs to be revised. And so I know, like, the air conditioners, we have general estimates, but we didn't get anything specific to weigh in money.
Right.
You're just saying, go out and get another general estimate?
It would be rough. I mean, the last estimate we had. Rough estimate, no. Oh, I think it's the estimate from?
2009, yeah.
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 There it is, yeah, estimate from 2009. The estimate we had was $400,000. I added $100,000 to it because I just thought a year's later, there's no hate, it could be that much more to bring us somewhat closer to reality. But, you know, again, I think, you know, we could ask for some kind of rough estimate just to at least, you know, get us in the ballpark. We'll never really know until we go out to bid.
It doesn't cost us anything to get a rough estimate?
It might actually cost a small amount to have somebody like the engineers that did the air conditioning project. You know, they pretty much know industry standards for how long a job will take, how many, how many hours of electrician, how many hours of plumber at this rate. And they could give us, you know, some kind of a more reasonable price. They were actually pretty good to deal with, I have to say, for the air conditioning project. Incredibly helpful. I just don't know air conditioners, so then I don't turn it on when I talk and yell at my kids if they leave it on to them. So they were just incredibly helpful in getting that project done. You know, and it is completed with the exception of the cafeteria. So that will be, I think, in a couple of weeks, actually.
The benefit is to have more realistic numbers, firmer numbers, and also perhaps a signal to the other financial entities in our town that we are serious about this air conditioning project.
Yeah. I mean, that's a big dollar amount of items that we've been considering as close as possible.
Especially with, I mean, another $20. And I know, I had mentioned this to Annie, but if there's a way to incorporate in that the examination of drainage in the boys' locker room.
Oh, yes.
That would be helpful. If the two are in any way related, like if you're already remodeling a girls' locker room and you're looking at plumbing and drainage and water pressure and all of that, the boys' locker room has at least one that we know needs some attention when it is happening.
Yeah, that's a roof drain that apparently, my only guess is that the drain is just not large enough to take a large amount of water at one time. And so it has to go somewhere. And choose the boys' locker room.
That could be worse than this.
And. And so, yeah, we can certainly look into that. I got the impression from Jeff that it was not the easiest, cheapest fix in the world to do. You know, it actually was quite involved to fix it. But we can certainly look into it again and find out exactly what we're bringing.
Anything else, Chris?
No, I know we have athletic fields on the agenda, so I guess we can wait until that.
Okay. Yeah, let's move to the school committee reports. Policy. Keith and I will anxiously await a meeting date to prom.
I know. It's a lot exciting for you guys waiting so that you're like, finally, it's here, a policy meeting.
All right, finance and tri-ward. I have no update from the last meeting here we had.
So I participated in a conservation commission meeting a week or two ago. And Berkshire Design, our designers, presented their design fields in the conservation commission approval. The design has actually been more tricky than they thought just a bit. Since it's all on floodplain, it's all about water management and maintaining water retention to meet sort of state codes. So they're proposing to have a pipe that comes from the northwest side down to the southeast side and drain it into the ditch that runs along Middle Street. The conservation commission's questions were about maintenance of the ditch. Who's going to maintain it? How? They asked us to work with DPW to talk about draining ditch maintenance. So if we do that, and actually, I just realized, I have an email from DPW. They've already reached out. I need to respond. And, but prior to that, actually, that day, there was a local landowner who claims that part of our proposed revision, athletic field revision is on, includes his land. And that's, so we actually have Berkshire Design working with the surveyor who is investigating that. As you can imagine, old records and hadley, it's not much to clear as far as they know. So as of even today, they're still working on reviewing fast records. It's in the southeast corner by the ditch. There were, the gentleman's claiming that he owns some of the property. It wasn't on the original survey we had that we all inherited back in 2010. So the conservation commission cannot adjudicate until they have that's been resolved. If it, if it turns out that that does include some of this property, we have to revise the plans which would get a little more money with Berkshire Design. Anything to add, Chris?
No, I don't know if you saw, the surveyor responded with the letter saying that he looked through all the records, he couldn't find anything, but he will continue to look, right? It's going to be a tricky thing, it is, just because there's, there's nothing clear that says one way or the other, you know, so. It would be interesting to see what he based his original results on, you know, with such unclear information, and maybe just going back to his notes or something, even if he still has them, might make some sense. So, I can reach out to him for that as well.
That'd be great, yeah, thank you. I've got a meeting with some financial funders this week. So, the idea would be, once the conservation commission, say, we resolve the land question, conservation commission approves, then we should continue with funding. And that's something of extra Berkshire Design, as they're getting closer to finalizing their design, revisiting the cost estimates. We'll never, we won't know the true cost until we get bids, but are we still in the same ballpark or below to make $500 for the first phase? Assuming that's true, we're looking at generate $100,000 to $150,000 for the first phase. So, meeting with some funders this week to kind of... And there was some questions too, of a local landowner's update, since I provided an update this week to him about where we're going. He abuzzed the southeast corner and the crossway to Middle Street, the folks who uses Jason's ass land. Inquired by us, so I'm trying to keep it updated.
Are there any visuals that you wanted to show for this meeting?
No, that's for my meeting.
Okay. I'm just checking, you know?
Pleasure.
That's the ditch. That's someone's name. Okay, thanks. All right, Mira.
So, as a realist of collaborative, their board meeting is Wednesday night. So, the last update I gave you was an executive director's report. That is in your inbox, it was before last meeting, so I'll have more information to you in this coming week.
Great, thanks. All right, we're on to the remaining action items. Approval AP warrants submitted in August 2018. Any concerns? Is there a motion?
Should we approve the AP warrant submitted in August 2018? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of August 27, 2018 minutes. Any concerns or questions on that?
Question to approve, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then we have the approval of warrants submitted in August 2018. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the warrants submitted August 2018. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we already approved the waiver of the building fee, there is one, and we approved field trips. So, I think we're on to just confirming our next regular meeting date, we have for October 22nd. It is Monday, is everybody... Is that it?
It is the 27th.
Monday, January 2nd.
I think that was for me.
Okay. Okay, this is the date. Great. Anything else should we go to the order?
I was giving a motion for...
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
22nd.
Yeah.